Before we start this evening, I would just like to say on behalf of members of council, and indeed the citizens of Peterborough, we want to express our sincere condolences to Sheldon Layman's family on the passing of his mother-in-law. Sheldon, just let us know that the thoughts and prayers of everybody here this evening is with you and your family during this extremely difficult time for you. The next item of business is the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we're on the treaty in traditional territory of the Mississauga Ashen Abic. We offer our gratitude for the First Peoples for their care for and teachings about our earth and our relations. May we honour these teachings. We now have thirty seconds of silent reflection. I now ask everyone to rise for the singing of the National Anthem. The Council of the City of Peterborough recognizes the principles contained in our Constitution and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Before we move to the approval of minutes, councillor Burke, I think you have some words about the overdose awareness month. Councillor Burke, please.
Thanks, Mayor Leo. I'd like to take a moment to recognize that Thursday, August 31st, is International Overdose Awareness Day. Since 2018 in Peterborough, we have lost 242 people to drug poisonings. It's important to recognize that the term "drug poisoning" is used because people aren't dying from taking too much, they're dying because of an unregulated drug supply, toxic drug supply. Provincially, there are 6.6 deaths a day, and year after year, Peterborough continues to hold its status as one of the hardest-hit communities in Ontario. Over the last 12 months, we have seen 72 deaths. That puts us on track for this year to be the worst yet, surpassing 2022. This crisis has had a profound effect on me personally. The deaths in our community represent people that we knew, our children, people that we grew up with, our fathers, mothers, sisters, brothers, our partners. These are all people who are deeply loved and known in our community. I'd like us to honour them now and take a moment to reflect on these losses with a moment of silence.
Councillor Burke, thanks for your profound words this evening on an issue that impacts us all each and every day. Thank you very much. I'd ask someone to move the minutes of June 5th, 2023, and June 26th, 2023. Councillor Hakey, Secretary of Council Baldwin, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. The next item of business is Declaration of pecuniary interest. Councillor Beamer, please.
Thank you, Mayor Leo. I will declare it, keen your interest on item 9.84, zoning for additional residential units. I have properties with residential units. Thank you, Mayor Leo.
Councillor Dugay, please.
Thank you, Mayor Leo. I will declare an interest with respect to items 98.5, being a zoning bylaw amendment for 54550 Brayley Drive. A family member is a co-owner of the planning company representing the developer. And secondly, your worship, under the item 9D1, the budget guideline in 9D2, there was a specific item referencing the transit shelter facility to be located on Main Street. I had declared an interest the previous week, and I think it's appropriate I continue to do same tonight.
Thank you much, councillor Dugay. Mr. Clerk, I have two items that impact me pecuniary interest. 9A4 is the secondary suite, as we're in the process of applying for one at 664 Mount Rose Street as we speak. And 9A6 is a subdivision that's being developed right across the road from our principal residence at 501 Minis Avenue, which will have the potential impact of appreciating all property values in that area. So. Mr. Clerk, please.
Thank you, your worship, and I'd also just advise council, there are several bylaws that relate to these matters, namely, in your agenda package, it's 23-085 relates to 540 Brayley Drive, 23-086 relates to 2159 Old Norwood Road, and 23-087 relates to the additional residential units.
So, Mr. Clerk, I'd also identify that, the two bylaws that are associated with 9A4, 9A6 are 11H and 11I in terms of pecuniary interest.
Thank you, your worship, and happy to assist in separating those out at the time from the bylaws pass.
And I will ask councillor Baldwin to take the chair for those two items. The next item is item eight, register to delegations. We have Mr. Staples that's with us this evening. Richard, please come forward. Good to see you, sir. You will have five minutes to make your presentation, and when you reach the four-minute mark, I'll give you a bit of a hint that it's time to wind up. And if you could give us your name and address for the official record, please.
Land River Road South, block 19, on the Ashburnham Ward. For my presentation tonight has to do with several key areas or takeaways, the first of which is up here on the screens, where the city staff, Richard Freeman, together with the accountant, Yvette Polinski, if I pronounced her name correctly, posed an answer for this question, which I'm going to ask council. When, if at all, will this city implement a tax ratio change for the city's industrial and commercial tax classes from 1.5 to 2.6, which is the rate of Kingston and Toronto for equivalent communities, as reported recently in the examiner and noticed by the mayor, CM Nottingham, as in agreement about a week ago here in council? In summary, the transition would transfer $21.8 million from the residential tax base to the industrial-commercial tax base in $2023, based on some assumptions as noticed in the attached schedule. And you've got Polinski, certified public accountant, certified accountant, August 23, last Friday. And on the screen is displayed amortization or downscaling to transfer $21 million to, from the residential sector over to the industrial-commercial sector. And this could be amortized, in my opinion, over a 16-year period or 10-year period, so as not to have a financial shock to those businesses with the explanation that they're simply going to be on par, like a golf course. If the handicap of the golf course, as you'll be familiar to get, Mr. Baldwin that attended the PGA, if it says a par three, it can't be a par six for another player. So this is just an equivalent tax for the commercial and industrial sector. Hands up those that attended the meeting of the Association of Municipal Cities, which they all are, 440 of the last week in London in this group. Okay, you all heard the premier speech, which I might have here in my cellphone, but I have some capsule comments. I'd like you to compare the premier speech to what's happening here in Peterborough. Hundreds of thousands of families are coming to Ontario from other parts of Canada, from all over the world. We're seeing new businesses set up shop. We're attracting billions of dollars of new investments, all new jobs across the sector. Another factory, a new shift, another production facility. And ask the city council, the mayor, city staff, where is the growth that's in other parts of Ontario for this community? We need an economic and industrial base, in my opinion. Why don't there's a sufficient tax base to provide the revenue to this city that's contemplating a 4.5%, 5.5%, 7%? So that's my main point, and this chart illustrates what could be done. How many minutes have I got left, man? Okay. Yes, you are. Good for you. And the next point is to look at the Comprehensive Ontario Police Services Act 2019, where the police are going to be required to, thank you very much, the police service boards and the commissioners shall provide adequate and effective policing in the area for which they have policing responsibility in accordance with the needs of the population, and having regard to the population of the area. And my recommendation tonight to council is that this city police force, with our exemplary new chief that I spent two hours with this past Wednesday, thanks to councillor Baldwin, this police force in our city needs what I would term in working title, a crime data analysis unit enabled by artificial general intelligence. That is, the clearance rate of the 6,200 crimes reported to our police force is 38%, which is not a pass. And the reason, in my opinion, for that is that these investigations are tremendously complex. You have armed journalists that are trying to track down murderers that wind up in Sault Ste. Marie or Sudbury, wherever that one was captured. And the camera system's just been introduced, caught a murderer at the corner of George and Charlotte Street. But as far as I know, there's only one person in charge of data analysis, crime data analysis in the age of computer artificial general intelligence in our city police force. The other point I would mention is in today's paper, it illustrates by second point, which is on the screen here, the city needs to do a transition, my opinion, to the next generation 911. Today's paper shows that the Amber Alert for the OPP failed in rescuing a three-month-year-old child that had been abducted, simply because the computer setup was not in the house, it was separated. And this city operates the same way right now. The failure of the 9/11 system here in the city, in my own estimation, the information I have, was that the three redundant systems that were supposed to back it up, if this system fails, or this system fails, or this system fails, were in three different locations. And the city's police computer center, the two computers, the two servers that run it are in a room without any fire protection. That is, with the...
Richard, you have 30 seconds left.
Okay, 30 seconds to finish up. Those are my three recommendations. Look at the chart to have a transition from industrial-commercial, $21.8 million for the taxpayers. Establish a crime detection analysis unit enabled by artificial general intelligence. And also to install, as we see here, the transition to the new generation 911, not to postpone, because today's bill goes straight. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Richard, thank you very much for your very detailed and well-researched presentation. There may be some questions for Richard. No questions. Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for your ongoing interest in the city of Peterborough.
Thank you, sir.
The next item of business is our consent items. Does anyone want to speak on 9A1? 9A1? 9A2? 9A3? 9A4, 9A5, 9A6 will be separated out, because they're members of declared pecuniary interests in those three items. 9A7? 9A7? 9A8? 9A9? 9A10? 9B1? 9B2? 9B3? 9C1? 9C2? 9C3? 9C4? 9D1? 9D1? Councillor Dugay?
Your worship, that, I believe, was an item that I specifically declared.
Okay, so that's added to the other three. Okay, thank you, councillor Dugay. 9D2? 9D2, okay. So we'll have 9D2 as a topic for discussion. Mr. Clerk, do we want to separate 9A4, 9A5, 9A6, and 9D1 and deal with them first?
Yes, thanks, your worship. Once we've got a motion that's seconded to approve the...
The rest of them.
Budget, you're right, we would have then remaining, the remaining items that would not be part of this evening's consent agenda would include, to your point, 9A4, 9A5, 9A6, 9D1, and 9D2.
I'll ask someone to move that. Councillor Burke, a seconder. Councillor Baldwin, we can have a vote on that. And I'd be remiss to say councillor Vicelliadis is absent this evening. That is carried. Councillor Baldwin asked you to take the chair to deal with 9A4, 9A5, 9A6, and 9D1.
I'll just do it from here, your worship.
That's terrific.
If anybody would like to speak to 9A4, the only for additional residential units. Mr. Clerk, do you want to vote on each of these individually, or?
Yes, I would suggest that, Mr. Chair.
A motion for 9A4. Councillor Dugay, seconded by councillor Chika. Discussion. Take a vote, Mr. Clerk.
Scared. Councillor Baldwin, continue.
Worship, I didn't see it was carried, but thank you for that.
Thanks, and his worship. His worship has declared on this matter, so he would not be part of the vote. And councillor Beamer declared as well on this. I did vote, but I'm affirmative.
That's carried. Okay, thanks. We're still not seeing anything on our screen, but that's okay. So we'll go on.
We're still not seeing anything on our screen, but that's, that's okay. So we'll go on to, um, item nine A five. And, um, that's the zoning bylaw amendment for five forty and five fifty Brayley Drive. Report IPS PL two-three-dash-zero-two-three. And was it councillor Purnell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will move this, this item, but I do have an amendment to make and something to add. Um, at the suggestion of staff who have prepared this for us. Um, during the, the time since our preliminary planning meeting, uh, there was a small discrepancy uh, discovered between two drawings. Uh, it's nothing significant, but it's something that we do need to address properly, so they don't have to start the whole process over again or, um, so this just makes it ni- nice and clean and simple and and by the book, which is what we always want. Um, so I'll read out the amendment, which the clerk already has, and then I will give the addition, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, councillor Purnell.
Thank you very much. So A would become that section three-point-nine exceptions of zoning bylaw in nineteen-ninety-seven dash one-two-three be amended by deleting the text of exception number three-three-six and replacing it in its entirety with the prescribed site-specific regulations for the properties known as five forty, five fifty Brayley Drive in accordance with the draft amendment attached as exhibit D of report IPS PL two-three-dash-zero-two-three, subject to amending paragraph D of exception number three-three-six to require a minimum landscape open space area of forty-five percent. Fun stuff. Um, and then addition to that is, uh, is the D. Um, in accordance with section thirty-four seventeen of the Planning Act, council has considered the changes to the proposed amendment zoning bylaw amendment and deems no further public notice is necessary. And that should tidy everything up, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Purnell. Um, Mr. Clerk, do we, will that become part of the main motion now then?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I would suggest that, uh, this amendment be voted on, and if it's approved by council, it would then become part of the main motion, which would then be a second vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I have a seconder.
Yeah, I was going to ask for a seconder. Councillor Crowley? Thank you for that. You comment your questions.
I would add to this, Mr. Chair, that staff have no objections to the applicant's request to adjust the proposed minimum landscape open space.
Thank you for that. To move on the amendment? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Chair, if that's possible, just to re-sign in, and just during that, if you just wanted to enunciate your vote, we'll continue to move forward.
That's in the described, Natalie. And, um, the amendment is carried. We'll now go to the main motion.
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chair, the, the main motion has now been amended.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments or questions with respect to that? Seeing now we'll go to vote. That is carried, and we'll note that councillor Dugay did not participate or vote on that particular item. Moving ahead to nine A points, or nine A six temporary used zoning bylaw amendment for twenty-one fifty-nine, four, normal vote. For that. Councillor Dugay, seconded by councillor Real. Your questions, discussion. Clerk, we'll go to a vote on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And that is carried, and we'll note that Mayor Leo did not participate or, um, have any conversation with respect to this particular item. Back to you, uh, Mayor Leo.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll now go and we'll deal with, uh, nine D one. Councillor Dugay has, uh, declared a conflict on this one, so we'll deal with it. Any comments or questions on?
Mayor Leo, if I might ask clarification from the clerks.
Absolutely.
Um, the guideline per se, uh, more, uh, mic- macro in its application. Um, I, I don't have a conflict with that, but there's a specific item that was referenced in the report itself that dealt with the proposed transit shelter facility in Main Street. It's that specific item. I just want to ensure I'm declaring my interest correctly, because I do not, I, I do support the recommended guideline. I could not, however, I remove myself from any discussion pertaining to that specific capital item.
Clerk?
Uh, thanks, your worship, and I may just, uh, seek a bit of clarification from Mr. Freeman here, but essentially, uh, as I understand it, this evening councillor Dugay, this is the mackerel, this is, uh, the overall budget number. There is no detailed discussion this evening on any particular matters which members of council may have a pecuniary interest in that they may wish to declare in the future, but I'll certainly defer to, to Mr. Freeman for any additional comments. Thank you, your worship.
Uh, your worship, I would concur with the clerk's, uh, comments and, and perhaps at, uh, when we're doing the detailed budget deliberations later this year in November, and we get to the, uh, specific transit budget, that might be the more appropriate spot to declare your pecuniary interest. Thank you, your worship.
And if I might, uh, your worship, uh, Mr. Clerk, I'm satisfied with that response, um, and explanation. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Dugay. Mr. Clerk, please.
Well, thanks, your worship, and just to clarify, uh, councillor Dugay, was it your intention to then not declare an interest this evening, or just continuing with that? Just wanted to clarify for our voting purposes.
I would like to remove my original proclamation of the interest, given Mr. Freeman's explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dugay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Thanks, your worship. We'll just have to make that adjustment for the vote tonight.
Sure. Somebody like to move, uh, nine D one then? Uh, councillor Chica, seconded by councillor Burke, comes your questions? Comes your questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. The next item we'll, uh, we'll discuss is nine D two. Uh, councillor Hakey, to start the debate.
Thank you very much, your worship. Um, I would like to move a motion to discuss a four percent all-inclusive tax rate increase at this point, if I could have a second.
Councillor Real, seconded. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Um, hm. Mr. Staples, you think I paid you to talk the way that you were talking tonight, because it's fitting right into what I'm saying. Um, COVID has, uh, changed not just the world, could you turn that up? Thank you, your worship. Uh, not just the world, but the city also. Uh, while we're not responsible for the rampant inflation, we have to deal with the consequences of it. Fuel, supplies, everything increasing. We have to deal with the work-from-home situation, which is affecting many of our services, as discussed earlier today in an email. Parking lot revenues, parking garage, a couple at the top may have vacant space that we have downtown. So we move forward, as our new CAO likes to say, business not as usual. Key to our strategic plan, the driving force behind it, as councillor Chica referred to last week, is vision and the growth. Growth requires the employment lands that we currently do not have. The vision lives off of those lands as we, and the new taxes flow from those lands that we do not have. Without these new lands to expand our tax base, we keep putting pressure on the existing taxpayer, paying more and receiving the same or less for their tax dollar. Without these employment lands to expand our tax base, we have to get back to basics and realize we can't be all things to all people. We know our infrastructure cannot be pushed out any longer, so cutting capital spending is a no-go. So where does that leave us? Well, it leaves us with only three ways that I can see in increasing our spending on important issues. Number one is to raise the taxes. Number two, cut the spending. Or three, increase our tax base. I submit that we have to make the land assembly and increasing the tax base a priority now. As councillor Real stated the other week, also, we're not a bank. We can't afford to loan out money anymore, the taxpayers' money, on projects that can be financed through different means. To be fair to the current taxpayer, we have to look at cutting our discretionary spending, which we heard last week was substantial, millions of dollars. That more than likely means job losses. The taxpayers cutting back on their spending, they expect the city to do the same. So who gets affected here? Well, we hear the marginalized and the vulnerable will bear the brunt of this. I agree, it's, it can be shared. If we raise the taxes as proposed, we'll see the fam- single-family taxpayer, the senior taxpayer, the single senior taxpayer, and the disabled taxpayer shoulder a cost they've told us, told me they can't afford. What I'm proposing would share the pain of this with the single-mindedness to do a deal on the, as the mayor has said, our number one priority, which is employment lands. Let's grow our tax base, not just increase the taxes on the existing base. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Hakey, councillor Real, please.
Um, to the chair, certainly, um, I was, I second this motion because I was interested to hear what councillor Dugay, or, uh, excuse me. Councillor Hakey had to say. Um, and I think the last time that this came up, I spoke about, uh, the four-point-five and the five-point-five. That is not the number that the citizens of the city of Peterborough are going to feel. My prediction is it's going to be six and seven percent. I'm not fear-mongering, I'm not trying to tell people, but when we have the board of health and this, and the city police coming in, that is going to be the number, what we have here. We asked our city staff to go away and look at between four-point-five and five-point-five percent and look at efficiencies. I don't think that does any, absolutely nothing. When we started out at three percent, five-point-five-nine percent and seven percent, and come within that threshold, and you give them the, uh, to go back and look at this, if they were to come in five-point-five-nine, all they've done is find efficiencies in point-zero-four percent. I can do that in a heartbeat. So I can't see, this here is a, um, a problem that we have here. But we have to look at what the systemic problem here. If we don't get our own house in order, and that has to do with finding efficiencies in-house. I'm not here to tell you that I want to lay people off, but if you're going to, we have to, there has to be realistic. What do people want in services? So when they want reduced services, that means you will have to lay people off. That's the only way the business does it. And we are a business. So if staff are going back and going to come back with us and saying, you know what, guys, we found the five-point-five-nine, they have done absolutely nothing. That means that I have to spend hour upon hour upon hour going through a book, trying to find the efficiencies that I can find. And that amounts to absolutely nothing. So again, I'm not fear-mongering. The number that I predict is six point, uh, or six percent to seven percent. That's what should be reported in the paper. Not four and a half to five and a half percent. Because we've just been told what the provincial government has come back and said, uh, they want a seventy-five, twenty-five for the public health, we're probably looking at a million dollars there. And then God only knows what the police are going to come at, or the asset they have, and eleven new officers. So I wanted to hear what councillor Hakey had to say. It's going to be a far cry to reach in what he's saying here at four percent. We don't have these lands to build the type of thing, and I agree with them that we need the lands to bring manufacturing industries here. When we were in the golden years of the city of Peterborough, this was a manufacturing center. We have lost those manufacturing jobs. The biggest employer are all service-based industries. The biggest employer is the hospital, that pays no taxes. The M and R, no taxes, school board, no taxes. These are the biggest employers. If we don't get our house in order, we will be going down this path every year. Every year, trying to find and move the city forward and do the infrastructure that all the, the taxpayers want us to see. But I don't see this motion tonight, or what was put forward last week, is going to address the problem at looking at between four and a half and five-point-five-nine percent. Not going to cut it. So let's get with it, and let's get with reality. It's six to seven percent.
Thank you very much, uh, councillor Real. Councillor Dugay, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, to my colleagues and to councillor Hakey. Uh, specifically, um, I recognize and respect your position, um, uh, insofar as the ability of, of our municipal realty tax base to accommodate escalating costs to administer and run this municipality. However, at AMO, I had opportunity to speak to many of our colleagues, and I would suggest you that most equivalent municipalities, their budget is greater than five percent, some cases six, seven, eight, nine percent. With respect to, um, with respect to the budget guideline and the program that has been offered to us by our staff, it's a guideline, it's not a fact, but it's a guideline. And, uh, the staff were assembled here today, and they're hearing us loud and clear, and I, and I believe they understand our directive through Commissioner Reyna, excuse me, CAO Reyna and our commissioners, that it's their responsibility to come back to us with their, those pencils sharpened and a budget that would consider discretionary expenses and other related measures. With respect to, though, our employment lands, the harsh reality is, while it is a priority of our community, and if we were successful in acquiring employment lands, if we were to follow our typical development approval process, shovels will not be in the ground for at least two years. At least two years. And I do not dispute the imperative nature of our municipality securing employment lands so that we can expand our employment base, uh, meaningful employers. But it will take at least a couple of years for us to realize a single benefit from same. So I believe we are boxed into a corner where the guideline that we approved and considered by a majority vote is appropriate. Staff have um, directions that they would follow. Also, at AMO, uh, councillor Real, you referenced the announcements regarding health unit. I haven't yet, I don't think we've yet had an understanding what that means for our budget. Might be positive, might be negative. There were other announcements made at AMO, I believe, of a financial interest to all municipalities, including Peterborough. So I can't support the motion. I continue to support the guideline that's been advanced by our staff, but I want to emphasize the significance and the imperative nature of our municipality expanding our employment lands and potentially our boundaries to accommodate the, I believe, forty-seven-hundred new homes that have been prescribed through provincial mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dugay. Um, councillor Baldwin, please, and councillor Chica.
Yeah, you, yeah, your worship, um, you know, respectfully, I'm not going to support the motion. We had a, a pretty, um, pretty rigorous debate, uh, a general committee. Um, I too was at AMO and heard all of the same information all at the same time. And, uh, I don't think our, our rate, uh, across the province is excessive. And I would say, having been on the last couple of councils, you know, sometimes we were looking at an artificial number to get the tax rate as low as we possibly could. And sometimes having things as low as you possibly could doesn't allow- And sometimes having things as low as you possibly could doesn't allow us to move the city forward. So again, it's a guideline. Most of the heavy lifting is going to happen in November. Staff is, uh, has taken their information from general committee. They're going to come back with, um, um, budget books and a, um, what do you call that book, Mr. Freeman, the, the highlights book? I'm hoping we'll find some highlights in there, but that's when the real, your worship, that's when the real job of council is. And, and I would, I would respectfully suggest that it's not only staff's job or role to come back with finding efficiencies, but councillors as well. I can recall last year when councillor Real did find an efficiency by bringing forward to finance, um, a deferral. And so, um, you know, I commend councillor, um, Real for doing that. Um, we also have a shared responsibility with our professional staff to take input from our community and come back to the table and discuss what's best, what can we afford? Um, what can we reasonably afford, uh, to move the city forward? Um, we saw some of the cuts that would be there for three percent, I'd say three to four percent. Those would be extremely detrimental to the fabric of our community, in my opinion. Um, two and three percent in twenty twenty-three. Uh, hate to say it, but it's, it's just not going to cut it this year. We're going to have to start to make some inroads with respect to our rate to move the city forward. If we don't, your worship, we're going to be into double-digit increases in the next four to five years. And I won't be on council then, but some people around the table will be, and that'll be a much, much harder sell uh, next term of council, the, or the council after. So I suspect we should get on with the job now, get a reasonable rate and, um, see what we can't do to, to turn our, our community around in a positive with respect to our infrastructure requirements and needs. And, um, and, uh, I'll just leave it at that, your worship, and certainly your respect, the, uh, the comments from the move over in the secondary. Thank you.
Councillor La Chica, please. Thank you councillor Baldwin, councillor La Chica.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, through you, um, I just would like to, uh, not wanting to repeat previous speakers, but, uh, to express, uh, my support for the last two previous speakers, um, councillor Dugay and councillor Baldwin. I, I respect councillor Hakey's motion. It's a difficult time. We don't want to feel the impact of tax increases, however, and as we did here at A M O, this is the landscape in our municipalities. We're facing, um, uncertain times and we need to make an investment in our cities and our municipalities. I so appreciated that we spent time creating a strategic plan, uh, for investment in a future-ready city. We have a beautiful city with aging infrastructure and that backlog will only continue if we don't make the deep investments we need to. And I appreciated our robust discussion about that at general committee. Um, you know, communities are, are facing a lot and, and the impact of legislation, which has impacted the revenue. And of course, it means that, that we're all facing tax increases across the province. So let's do this, let's prepare for the future, let's address our aging infrastructure so that our streets and our byways and our cities, uh, are no longer crumbling. We need more than a Band-Aid, we need investment. So I, I, I can't support the motion and appreciate that staff will come forward with what they stated they would, uh, with the range and what was, um, passed to general committee. And they did such a great job in that report, itemizing things in the three ways that they did. Um, I, I, I urge you to think clearly before the vote on this and, uh, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you very much, councillor Chica. Just to let everybody know where they are on the list, it's councillor Burke next, and councillor Crowley, and then councillor Beamer. Uh, councillor Burke, please.
Thanks, Mayor Leo. Um, through the chair. You know, I don't really know if I have anything to add to the conversation after hearing, you know, Joy and everyone and Gary speak to it. Um, I also think that we had a very healthy conversation about this uh, a couple of weeks ago when we talked about it. And I, I respect, I respect where councillor Hakey is coming from, thinking about people that are on a fixed income. Um, but you know, I think this idea of service lands or whatever has been like, I think it goes over back for over ten years. So like, we have a path to choose tonight. And we can take that path of like, continuing to hope for it and taking that path of comfort to keep everyone's taxes down. Um, or we can make the really hard decision or the tougher decision, the decision that requires us to have some character and really invest in the city, you know? And as a new councillor, like the theme of the year for me has been that, you know, our appetite for what we want to do, um, we don't have a budget that we support to afford that. We hear about these projects and projects and projects that we all agree upon and we say yee-haw. And we would love to see it have happened, but then during these important conversations, like we don't support and empower staff to do that. Right? Um, the most extreme example that illustrates that for me is when you know, all of us as councillors are dealing with these little nitpicky, um, complaints by community members like clean up the streets, clean up my garbage, clean up the graffiti. So we had a very healthy talk about the garbage cans that we saw that had overflowed in parks. And then we come to find out that we only have like one staff member to look after forty-two parks or something to clean up the garbage from those bins. You know, and I can't think of something that doesn't more clearly illustrate, um, the fact that we don't have the capacity to do what we want to do. I don't even think we have the capacity to maintain our current infrastructure. Right? And, you know, I represent someone who's young on council. I don't make a lot of money. I have a family. And, you know, we live month to month. And when I have these discussions of survival and, and finance and taxes with my wife, you know, we are okay with, with paying that extra couple of hundred of dol- hundred dollars. Um, if we feel that it's going to support this community to do the things that we feel that it needs. And like the theme of the day, as someone who is downtown, is that people are dissatisfied, dissatisfied with the current levels of service and support from the city. So I don't know how people are going to feel when we are going to have to look at those drastic cuts and implications, um, at, at the end of the year that we heard about in those slides from the, from the commissioners. Um, so I respect councillor Hakey's viewpoint. I hear you and I hear from the people that are on fixed incomes, but, um, I am going to vote with the people that have my ear, that desperately want, um, changes and projects and, and development to have, to happen for the city that hasn't been able to happen for a long time because we haven't supported those things. Thank you.
Very much councillor Burke. Councillor Crowley, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I, I'm not going to support it either. Um, we are in an extremely extraordinary position this year as a city. Um, I'd love a zero percent tax increase. That'd be fantastic. I got a mortgage renewing this year. That'd be great. I'd love it. We mathematically cannot afford to go three percent, two percent, one percent, zero, like we can't. I've had people reach out to me and say, you know, any number is a bad number. So nothing that we're doing here as a council is punitive. You know, I'm not on council suggesting that we go four point five to five point five to be punitive against the city of Peterborough or against its residents. It's, it's an extraordinary situation that we're in. Bill twenty-three has cut us off at the knees. We have an inflation rate that is the highest, I believe, than any year in the last twenty-five years. We have interest rates skyrocketing, which is affecting our ability to fund capital projects. We have an insurance rate that is insanity right now. I believe it's two point two per, two point two million last year is what we paid, I believe, Mr. Freeman, I think. It's, it's crazy, the amount of external pressures that we are feeling as a city. And it's by no means, I absolutely love the arguments that, that councillor Hakey and councillor Real made. It, it shows that their hearts are in the right place. And my heart, I feel, is in the right place too. I'm not doing this or suggesting that council, uh, move forward with that guideline number, by the way. It's just a guideline number. We get the, the draft budget back in November and from there, like councillor Baldwin said, we can look at, at, uh, potential savings after that. But again, it's just a guideline number. We are facing a number of external pressures that we're trying to fight through to try to come up with a reasonable number where we can fund the projects that we need to fund, but also not, um, uh, completely eliminate our tax base. So there's a lot of things that we're fighting through. It's not as simple as, as council setting an arbitrary number and, uh, enrolling with it. So, uh, I can't support it. And, uh, thank you for, for bringing it forward, both of you. And I appreciate it. Thank you, your worship.
Thanks very much, councillor Carly. Uh, the chair of finance, councillor Beamer, please.
Thank you, Mayor Leo. Appreciate that. Uh, Mayor Leo, I did support the four point five to five point five guideline last week. As I said, it's a starting process. I also mentioned it was a little bit higher than I'm accustomed to. I, uh, tend to be one of the councillors that fight for a lower taxes and, uh, certainly was one of the councillors who, who pushed, uh, to reduce the tax rate last year in previous terms. So I am going to support councillor Hakey's four per, uh, four percent. It's certainly a challenge, uh, Mayor Leo. We have a lot of needs in the community. Uh, we are falling behind. One of the top issues I hear about is roads. Fix my roads. And as councillor Hakey said, we need to invest heavily in capital, capital this year and, and future years. But Mayor Leo, I've said this before, we do need to be responsible and have an obligation for the taxpayers' ability to pay. Peterborough is one of the highest property tax rates in Ontario. The median household gross income in Peterborough is well below the Ontario average. A large portion of our community make less than thirty-five thousand dollars. So residents have a lower median income, yet pay higher property taxes. And as one of my colleagues, councillor Pernell, always says correctly, municipal tax dollars are not income tested like provincial and federal. So a large percentage of our residents after tax dollars go to property taxes. Mayor Leo, we do have to remember, there's only so much that can go on the backs of the property taxpayers. As some of my colleagues have said tonight, many residents in Peterborough are struggling. They're struggling with inflation, gas, food, insurance, rent and mortgage. Residents can't simply vote themselves a salary increase or a pension increase. Many taxpayers are working poor, single mothers, single fathers, seniors and middle class. And they too are on the brink. If we keep increasing their taxes, they'll find themselves in poverty and they'll be utilizing our social services. A financial report in July indicated that fifty-three percent of Canadians are currently two hundred dollars away from insolvency. That's up ten percent since December. R B C two weeks ago came out with the forecast indicating twenty twenty-four is going to be a very tough year for many Canadians based on the continued high interest rate. And as councillor Crowley alluded to, many of the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty mortgages that were locked in at two percent will be coming up for renewal in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five at five, six and seven percent. So we do need to be mindful of the residents' ability to pay and their financial struggles. We have to keep that in mind. Mayor Leo, one thing I've always done over the years, and it opens you up to criticism and everything else, but I always bring forth ideas and suggestions to lower the tax rate. Last term at council, every budget I brought for, brought forth ideas to lower the tax rate. Last budget I brought forth, well, ideas to lower the tax rate. So I'm just going to throw out perhaps three, Mayor Leo, that perhaps we can think about, or staff just keep in mind, come November. One is efficiencies and cuts. I believe there is an appetite in the community for this. The Peterborough Examiner listed the potential cuts and the feedback that I've received from most residents is yes. Now, there was one exception, clearing of your sidewalks. But a lot of the emails I, and calls I got were yes, we need to seriously look at eliminating stat holiday for transit. We all saw the empty buses on the August long weekend. Daycare. Why are property tax dollars going to subsidize daycare? Other communities do not subsidize daycare with property taxes. It's a provincial responsibility. And now they're getting funding from the federal government. We should not be using Peterborough property taxes for daycares. Folks, one thing I hear from residents is the feeling that this council spends too much money, too much time and too much resources on fifty to seventy people. That can't continue. And there's a lot of subsidies that residents contact me about, said, I just read in the paper you subsidize that. Is that correct? Number two, Mayor Leo, and we re- received some information today, and I'm stealing from councillor Real, is to look at our industrial residential tax rates. They do need to be looked at. We received some information today, but is that, is that providing a strong return on investment? The third one, Mayor Leo, this will open me up to criticism, but I do think other communities do do it, is using some of the casino and P D I interest, not principal, interest money to reduce the operating. There's pros and cons to this, just like all of our decisions. So it needs to be thought out. But perhaps we need to look in a very tough year at using some, some casino and P D I interest money to reduce the operating budget. Other communities do do it. So Mayor Leo, I do, when I talk about reducing taxes, I like to at least come with some ideas. So those are some thoughts. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, Mayor Leo, it's a tough situation, but we do have to keep in mind the taxpayers' ability to pay. And many taxpayers out there are really, really struggling right now. Pensioners, working class, working poor, um, seniors, single moms, single dads. A lot of people are scared and really struggling financially, and we just need to keep in mind their ability to pay. Thank you for listening.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, councillor Beamer. Uh, councillor Burke for a second time, and then councillor Baldwin for a second time.
Yeah, thanks through the chair. And just in response to the conversation, um, you know, I really appreciate, um, um, councillor Beamer's remarks and, you know, I appreciate that you were very thought through with your words um, and your ideas, but I don't think that that makes them absolutes. Right? I am one of those families that represents the working class that you talked about in that thirty-five thousand dollar category. And the thing that wasn't really talked about is that people like us survive on a lot of those programs in the slides that we looked at that could be potentially cut. You know, we survive on the, on the, on access to daycare and it's still not easy to find daycare, even though we subsidize it. You know, we just, we, we survive on those discretionary benefits that was talked about. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the services and community services, you know, I'm an artist. You know, what would this, what would this look like for the arts? Right? Because all of your ideas, you know, if you go back in the examiner, two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, these, these are the same ideas that keep getting presented. And yet it's never, it's never the big pitch that gets us out of the hole that we're in. Right? This is the reality that we're in. We're looking at the cuts that seem to come from the bottom up. And so the very people that we've heard about that would save from lower taxes, like they, we, we are the people that survive on those programs, right? And we can't have it both ways. And I just, I am really fearful for what it, we're, it, a, a budget, even though it is a guideline, it sets a precedent for what's to come. And it was really scary hearing those presentations. What, what would be on the chopping block? What would be cut? What we, what would be pared down? And then what we just wouldn't be able to do. Um, so I, I just think I always come back to what I said the first time that I spoke, which is that, which is that, you know, people that may have some fear around what a tax rate hike would look like. When I have sat and talked with them, we established a couple of things. A, we establish that in actuality, it doesn't actually amount to that much per household. That's one thing. And, and then two, we establish that as a city, if we want to respond to the needs of the community in a meaningful and impactful way, whether that be the pothole that's sitting on your street that has been unattended to, whether that's the overflowing garbage can in the park that never gets picked up, right? We have to fund those things. We have to fund those things. And I'm telling you right now, the people that I'm connected to and that I talk with every day in downtown Peterborough are not satisfied with the current levels of service and support that they are getting from the city. And they are like us when we have these discussions around the table. They get excited about what a future-ready Peterborough could be. But I'm telling you, we have to fund it and we're not going to get there at four percent.
Thank councillor Burke, councillor Baldwin for a second time. Councillor Baldwin, please.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Um, just a couple of, um, couple of questions for you, if I might, to Mr. Freeman. Richard, the, um, the idea that, uh, the finance chair just made public would be to take money, uh, take the interest from P D I and um, the casino and move it into operating. Now, my elementary math tells me that if we do that in twenty twenty-four, we'll need to continue to do that in every subsequent year. we'll need to continue to do that in every subsequent year. If is my elementary math correct? In order to keep the same level of service? And what happens if we don't do it the next year?
Uh, your worship, um, absolutely, the the councillor is right. If we if we start to pull in monies into the into the operating budget from from either the casino or the sale of PDI's, the legacy fund, then then we will need to maintain that on a go-forward basis. Otherwise, that if we do not, then we're simply postponing those tax increases until the day that we do. So, um, you know, so so absolutely. Right now, those monies, both the, you know, are are all channeled into the capital budget to address infrastructure needs in the community.
So through through his worship, that that's my concern with the suggestion. I do appreciate councillor Beamer bringing a possible solution to it. But we've also, we we already know that our, one of our our largest concerns is the aging infrastructure. And so by taking money out of funds that are are allowing us to leverage that money to put in into infrastructure, to put it into operating for one year, I I don't believe is is a prudent way to go. I guess the other question I have, and if I hadn't known the motion was coming at four percent, Mr Freeman, I would have, I would have called earlier or emailed. Um, so I don't know whether you can answer it on the fly or or Ms Poplinsky. Again, we're looking at a a four percent, um, suggestion here now. And and if our staff came back and and council was able to get four points, let's say the lower end, four point five, what's the difference to the to the average taxpayer between four four percent, a four percent all-inclusive tax increase versus four point five? Is that something like, um, seventy five dollars a year? I'm just looking for a ballpark here.
Uh, your worship, um, if I just delay just a few seconds, I'm sure that my my staff colleagues in the back row here are going to bail me out. And I'll turn to to Mr McDougall or Ms Poplinsky, and they probably have the spreadsheet up that would be able to calculate that fairly quickly. Uh, Mr Chairman, or sorry, your worship, that it's about twenty dollars a year is the impact.
I need to go back to grade eight math. So, uh, but thank you very much for that figure. The other thing that's concerning, and again, with respect to our finance chair is, your worship, daycare is absolutely essential. And it employs a significant number of women in the in the workforce. That would be probably the last cut I'd like to see made for a whole host of reasons. Uh, to councillor Burke's previous comments, his family depends on discretionary benefits and many, many other people do as well. And daycare is critical. Young families, they don't put their kids into Montessori, particularly until, you know, they're three years old and or junior kindergarten starts, doesn't start till four. And if you've got two people working and they need to work to make a go of it, um, that's just the wrong place, in my humble opinion, your worship. So, um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baldwin. Councillor Dugay for a second time.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I was remiss in not adding to my, um, earlier comments that, um, that I would, um, support um, our review, council and staff's review of our current, uh, realty tax ratios, residential and that of non-residential, commercial, industrial. Um, a slight bump, uh, in the res, uh, commercial and industrial, slight increased, even if it's done initially year one and carried over time, uh, would be favorable to, uh, the municipal realty tax. Or similarly, if we hold a line on our municipal realty taxes, we generate additional tax revenue to carry forward the very programs that our municipality needs to move forward. So I do, I would support a review and additional details from perhaps staff through our forthcoming budget discussions on implications of adjusting the tax ratio. That is, commercial, industrial paying a bit more, and a bit might be a half percent or one percent. I think those, uh, it's quite, it's my understanding that, uh, commercial, industrial uh, property owners have enjoyed a very favorable tax ratio in this city for a period of time. Moreover, I have compared our ratio, uh, to other municipalities. Um, and again, it's 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 disproportionate. And the amount that might be, that could be paid and generated, even with a half percent increase, is significant. And that half a percent can to offset the costs that could be borne by the tax doll, a rate payers, which we've heard a half percent increase is twenty dollars per twenty twenty five dollars, a half percent helps because that's expressed across a very large budget, which then helps perhaps address some of councillor Beamer's comments and others about what what programs we need to uh, consider. Lastly, if I can offer that when I was a city employee, the range of services and programs we offered some seventeen years ago have vastly expanded. And they vastly expanded by provincial mandate, federal mandate, or the very, our very community. And councils attempt, previous councils attempt to address the growing needs and diversities of our community. We've added more services. And thus, we're facing greater costs. So again, it's either been by mandate or community needs. So this this council and these councils and these various chambers have had to make decisions to expand our portfolio and suite of programs. So if I might, in summary, your worship, I would support, uh, a review and consideration of how we might be able to tackle or consider the non-residential portion of our municipal realty, uh, tax structure. And because I think that it could potentially help us deliver more fulsome suite of programs on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Yes, or councillor Dugay, councillor Pernell, you haven't spoken. You know, I just wanted to give everybody a turn before I spoke.
I was debating whether to weigh in on this one or a couple of them. First off, there's no way I would ever agree to put the interest from the PDI money into operating. That that's designated for capital. It's designated for future green power plants that we want to be able to produce and and generate revenue from that. So that is a no-go for me, that it has to stay as capital. Um, I spoke previously about being in favor of the one percent, uh, tax, uh, dedicated to capital and increasing our capital works, which we desperately need, uh, to catch up and to maintain. Um, the other part of the argument, and I suspect will there'll be a review of the industrial tax rate versus residential, and that's always a balance. And part of the reason, um, it was even considered to, um, not have the industrial as high is because neighbor or cities, municipalities, even townships who are competing with us for those jobs were lowering theirs, even cancelling all development charges to attract jobs to their community. So when we are desperately trying to a acquire the employment lands, um, we need to in tandem, consider that industrial tax rate because we don't want to work so hard to acquire something. And then in the very next breath, turn people away because we've increased the tax rate too much. So there's definitely a balance to that discussion. And if a report's coming forward on this whole scenario, I'm sure that will be be part of the information that staff could give us, you know, the pros and cons, so we can make an educated decision on on those factors. So I'll leave it at that, but I'm I'm not going to support the motion on the floor. There are too many things that we do need to accomplish, uh, for our citizens that they want and ask us for and do not want to give up. Um, it's, it is a tough situation, but we've got to do it and, um, be realistic going, be realistic going forward and improve those services that they're not happy with. Right? I know the Transit Committee is working very hard to bring forward something in the transit area to try and, um, make everybody happy, not just the seniors, not not just the students, but everybody who wants to use transit. Then we can increase the ridership even more on that. That's another way to, um, have revenue. To have our downtown cleaned up will attract more people to our downtown. And those parking spots will be filled when people return to the downtown. That's more more revenue, more life in our downtown. And it's, it it, there's a domino effect to that. Um, so there's many things that are in the works, uh, to help in many of these areas. And we can't put a chokehold on it now. We we have to, we have to continue. Those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thanks, uh, thanks very much, councillor Pernell. I'll be supporting the, um, the resolution from last week's committee, the whole, the draft guideline between, uh, four point five and five point five percent. I certainly value, uh, the discussion we've had this evening, uh, because it's very important to the future of our community. One of the things that's always been clear to me is tax policy should be efficient and effective. That's why we need this discussion about business tax ratio. I'm, I have to be convinced that when we moved in that direction, it was both the efficient and effective to help us broaden our economic base. It is my sense that the last greenfield developed that occurred in the city of Peterborough was twenty eighteen, when Fairlife came to Peterborough. If somebody can help me around this table, I would like to know the most recent greenfield development this community, uh, since twenty eighteen. I already know the answer to the question that I I just posed. It is zero. So I want to actually, I want to know, I'm an evidence and database person. I want to know from PKAT, and I thank Richard for his memo to me today. I want to find out from Ron DeKeenon how helpful these tax ratios have been to attract business or and or expand a business within the boundaries of the city of Peterborough. I suspect I know the answer to that, but I certainly would like to get her information. There is no question. I know you know that fourteen percent of our community earns thirty thousand dollars or less. I know that you know that the mean, uh, couple of mean income in the city of Peterborough is sixty four thousand dollars, some of the lowest in the province of Ontario. I know that. I understand that. I know the impact. But I can tell you, when you look at at the capital planning report for this community, it may not be twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, but I can guarantee everyone tonight that there's double double-digit tax increases coming before the end of this decade if we don't make modest attempts now to try to solve some of these problems that we faced. Let me give you a concrete example. I'd someone called me the other day, they broke a spring in their vehicle on one of the main streets of Peterborough. Seven hundred dollars, uh, to repair that spring in their automobile. For example, if we had Fortune five hundred companies coming to Peterborough looking for investment, we drove them down Water Street, George Street, Charlotte Street, you name it, into the streets of downtown Peterborough. What would be the topic of conversation when they finish their visit to Peterborough? It wouldn't be that Peterborough is such a great place. The conversation would be how bad the roads are, how bad the infrastructure is. Why would we want to invest in this community? We have an obligation through our strategic plan to get this community in shape so that we can move forward. I don't want to increase taxes. Last thing I would want to do, because I understand the impact. But if we don't do it now, this city will continually be behind other comparable communities in the province of Ontario. We'll be behind Kingston, we'll be behind Guelph, we'll be behind Kitchener, we'll be behind Botterloo, we'll be behind Branford. We just cannot have, we have an obligation to our citizens of us community to move forward. So that's why I'll continue to support the guideline, and that's why we need to move forward. Other speakers. Guess we'll go to a vote.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Just, uh, just to clarify for members of council, it's my understanding that, uh, it's moved by councillor Hakey and Real that the recommendation A, the the main motion reads that the draft twenty twenty four operating budget reflected an estimated all-inclusive uh, increase of four percent. And then recommendation B is, uh, is as was written. I just wanted to clarify that, if I understood that correctly, your worship.
You're I pushed my button too fast and voted against my own motion. So I'd like to, I'd like
Councillor Hakey?
That's, yeah, too bad, too bad.
Councillor Hakey, it's it's like the Catholic Church. I could give you absolution, so you could vote again.
Um, it happened. What happens? That word, yes. Um, if I could retract that, thank you very
Absolutely. Councillor Dugay, start your head up. Councillor Dugay, please.
Uh, your worship, like my colleague, the other Mr Dugay, I may have voted, uh, uh, too quickly and voted yes, and I believe I should have voted no.
But councillor Dugay, I don't, I ought to give one absolution per session.
I'll consider this my first. Thank you, your worship. I need to retract that because of now that I've read this, uh, utilizing my colleague's screen, I voted in error.
So, Mr Clerk, could you help us out here? We don't
Thanks, your worship. My my colleague here has made an adjustment, and I'll just clarify, we have, uh, what I see here now is councillor Dugay has voted in the negative. And I see that, uh, councillor Hakey has voted in the affirmative. And the votes continue.
And it's lost. But now go to the main motion. Sorry. I need a mover for a report to nine D two, the Budget Guide, councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Baldwin. Uh, comments or questions? We go to a vote. That's correct. And that is carried. Mr Clerk, do we have any notices of motion this time?
Not this evening, your worship.
And we'll now go to bylaws. Mr Clerk, with the exception of the ones that, uh, members of council have identified as, uh, with regards to a pecuniary interest.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, I might suggest if it's the will of council that we would, uh, there's four separate votes this evening on the bylaws. I would suggest the first one could be bylaws twenty three dash zero seven nine through to including bylaw twenty three dash zero eight eight less the three bylaws that are, uh, interests have been declared, which are twenty three zero eight five, zero eight six and zero eight seven.
Can someone move those? Councillor Baldwin, seconded, councillor Pernell. Comments or questions? We go to a vote. That's carried. Mr Clerk, the remaining bylaws?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, next would be bylaw twenty three dash zero eight five. And, uh, that's, that's, uh, relates to five forty and five fifty really drive, which councillor Dugay, uh, expressed an interest in.
And the two that I've declared, eighty six and eighty seven. Okay. Maybe I'll ask councillor Baldwin just to take the chair for those three bylaws.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I I would suggest, uh, we just do a single vote on each of these, and starting with bylaw twenty three dash zero eight five, which relates to, uh, five forty and five fifty pretty drive. And that's the bylaw that councillor Dugay has expressed an interest in.
Councillor Pernell, moving. Second year councillor Dugay? Oh, you're declared councillor, but you can other comments, questions? Take a vote. It's carried. Next by law, Mr Clerk, please.
Uh, thanks, Mr Chair. That'd be bylaw twenty three dash zero eight six, which relates to the property at twenty one fifty nine Old Norwood Road. And it's worship had declared an interest in.
Thanks for that. Over. Councillor Real, seconded by councillor Pernell. Comments or questions? Seeing them will take a vote. Uh, two is carried and we'll note that councillor, um, Dugay did not participate or vote. And the last one, um, Mr Clerk.
Thanks, Mr Chair. That'd be bylaw twenty three dash zero eight seven, which relates to the additional residential units and, uh, it's worship and And, uh, His Worship and councillor Beamer had declared interest on those.
Thank you for that, moved by councillor Purnell. Seconded by councillor La Chica. Comments or questions? Mr. Clerk, we'll take a vote. That is carried, and we'll note that, uh, His Worship and councillor Beamer did not participate or vote on that item. Sure, Your Worship, I'll turn the chair back to you. Thank you very much, councillor Baldwin. Other business? Any other business at this time? Once, twice, three times, no other business? We'll now go to, uh, the confirmation bylaw, Mr. Clerk.
Thanks, Your Worship. It's bylaw twenty-three dash zero eight nine, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council at its meeting held on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Just require a move in a secondary, Your Worship.
Councillor Burke, I think, councillor Baldwin, any councillor Purnell? Very good. Okay. And we'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Somebody like to move a German? Councillor Crowley, councillor Purnell, we'll go to a vote. That is carried. Businesses.